Good evening and welcome to the Greenfield Public Schools School Committee meeting on Wednesday, May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. This meeting is being recorded by Greenfield Community Television. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time. I don't see any. Secretary Denis, will you call the roll?
Chair Johnson aside.
I am here.
Secretary Denis, I am here. Vice Chair Sexton?
I'm here.
Member Goodwin?
Here.
Member Childs?
Here.
Mayor Disorga? Are you with us on the Zoom, Mayor Disorga?
I see the mayor. I don't know if she can hear us. Oh, because I don't have the... Sorry about that, folks. We convened the meeting and I forgot to turn on the microphone. We were on Mayor Disorga for a roll call.
I'm here.
Member Martini? Are you present?
Here.
Okay.
Yes, here.
We are all present. You have a quorum.
Thank you. And members on Zoom might have missed me saying that we are being recorded by GCTV. And if you're also recording, please notify me. Okay, I don't see anyone on Zoom doing that either. We'll move to public comment. We'll start public comment with folks in the room. And if you are on Zoom and wish to be recognized, please raise your virtual hand or put a comment in the chat. So we can know to get in. You have three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank you for all your hard work. This is not easy, and this is not an easy time of the year either, when we all start talking about budget. Oh, sorry. Pamela Goodwin, fifty-four High Street. I live over at the Weldon. So I was very excited to read that Senator Comerford has been fighting really hard for money for education purposes and transportation. I don't know if that's coming as fast as we need it. So I just want to state ASAP would be wonderful. Because we are talking about possibly cutting staff, teachers, TAs, which are very necessary, as my education background can substantiate, and maybe even programs. So I, like many people in the city, are heartbroken about that possibility. And I know that you have been pulling your hair out, every one of you, trying to figure out how this is all going to work. So I have no idea how fast Comerford will come through, through the state. But in the meantime, you have heard Doug Suelen speak numerous times at the school committee when I was deciding not to attend school committee in the past. And I would just echo that it's going to take a whole lot of communities pulling together to try to deal with the lack of money that the state will not fund. When the state says we need Title This and Title That, and we need special needs, then that is critical, that we have to figure out where is that money coming from? Or do you want to just scrap the IEP program, which is not going to work? We have more and more kids in great need as a result of the remote learning, as we all know. And, you know, there may be kids with lots of emotional needs, even though, and they've just gone backwards in so many ways. I have six grandkids, and it was very difficult for them to try this. But, well, right now, the youngest is seven. So for her to sit still and try to do something on a computer that was a touchscreen that my kids had to go out and buy was extremely difficult. She's a hyperkid, anyway. The ten-year-old is doing well. They both are excellent at reading. And that's because people have taken it and made a big effort from the home. So there's just so many needs. And I guess I will just wrap up by saying I also have taught some special need kids in their own home. So I have a history of being hired by school systems to work one-on-one with kids. And we want, we don't want a school size that's going to make that impossible. So my son-in-law laid off a lot of teachers in the Attleboro School System, and the union wasn't strong enough to insist, and they're increased immensely. The larger the class sizes, the less attendance you're going to get, you know, attention from those teachers and TAs. Thank you. I hear it, Glenn. Thanks for your time.
No other people in the room for a public comment? Anyone on Zoom? Not seeing any. Thank you. We will move on to the report of student representatives to the committee.
All right. So we're going to begin with student council. The student council recently elected their board of officers for next year. The president is Megan Collins. Co-vice presidents this year of Holly Babino and April Rooney-Adams. Secretary is Caitlin Roberts. Our tech master is Ivy Ray. Historian, Kanza Nazrullah. Parliamentarian, Julia Belleville. And WMASC delegate is Auburn Mass. During teacher appreciation this last week, we delivered room service to the staff. They were able to select either a sweet or savory crepe and have it delivered before classes in the morning. We partnered with the Life Skills Program to make and deliver those breakfasts. Unfortunately, we were rained out for our annual flagging event. In preparation for Memorial Day, we would work with Veterans Agency, replacing the flags at a local cemetery. But again, unfortunately, this was canceled due to rain. At the end of the month, we will hold our banquet and celebrate our Year of Leadership, Service, and Friendship, as well as wish our seniors well as they move on. Paperwork for class officers will be available soon, and we will hold elections at the beginning of June.
All right. So for Key Club, officer elections and senior celebrations are this week. We are in the process of planning our Field Day at the Academy of Early Learning on June third. There will be field games, reading, relay races, and fun will be had by all.
All right. And then get ready for the athletics section. This is a lot of different records and rankings and leagues. So I'm sorry if I stumble in the process. As of yesterday, the rain had finally stopped over quite a few weeks. So there's a very busy week ahead for all of our teams. Baseball is nine and six, with three games left until the Western Mass playoffs. Softball is ten and four, with four games left until Western Mass. Baseball is ranked third in Class C, and softball is ranked first in Class C for Western Mass. Playoffs start May twenty-first, with the finals May twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth. The MIAA playoffs start May thirtieth. Boys tennis is five and six, with one match remaining. Girls tennis is five and seven, with three matches to go. Boys and girls track will compete in the PVIAAC finals at Mount Greylock on Saturday, May twenty-fourth, with the MIAA finals at Tufts University, May thirtieth to June first. Recently, Brad's Place has taken up the Athlete of the Week program that Mesa Verde had started. And so the athletes so far have been myself for boys tennis, Devon Brown for boys tennis, and Arthur Fitzpatrick for baseball. We hope as the season comes to a close, you go out and support our student athletes.
For Library Club, Library Club has had a fantastic field trip with the tenth grade to Smith College, where we heard renowned Filipino-American poet Patrick Rosal give a poetry reading. They visited the Botanic Gardens and toured the art museum. We have already started planning for next year, but have a couple more events planned for this year, which are a video game and an end-of-year picnic.
The French Club hosted a very successful coffeehouse event last week. It was well-attended by students and families and featured many exciting performances from both students and staff. Also, French Club continues recruiting and planning for their trip to France, which is next April in two thousand and twenty-six, which is open to all GHS students. If you are interested in learning more about the trip, please attend the info meeting this coming Tuesday, May twentieth, at six thirty PM in the lecture hall. And you can also contact Madam Hartman for more details.
For Drama Club, we are in the middle of deciding what play to do next year and are considering whether we will do two smaller productions, one in the fall and one in the spring. An announcement will happen in the next two weeks, so stay tuned.
The Students of Color Club is finishing up their visits to the middle school to share their presentations on how to address racial slurs with the sixth-grade advisories. They're also planning a trip to Boston in early June, thanks to a grant from Communities That Care. The day will include a visit to the Museum of African-American History and a park ranger-guided tour of the Black Heritage Trail.
Sustainability Club, we attended the Phillips Academy Andover Climate Summit, where we heard the president of Massachusetts Audubon speak and attended multiple workshops on lobbying, climate literacy, and more. We also attended the Four Rivers Charter School Climate Summit, where we networked with students from the local area and attended workshops that revolved around the theme of climate action and activism. We're hoping to end our year by hosting a thrift swap event at the high school on May twenty-first, which will promote sustainable fashion practices.
And finally, Trivia Club, which is finishing up a virtual competition and are still actively looking for new members. So if anyone is interested in trivia and has a good memory, they would love to have new members. The club is planning a fall match sponsored by our club at GHS with local school trivia teams to prepare for future competitions. That concludes the report today, but if you have any questions, we would be happy to answer.
Any questions from the committee? The superintendent has something.
I just wanted to recognize Shane. Tonight is his last meeting with us. He is graduating on May thirty-first with the class of two thousand and twenty-five. He set it to Brown University in the fall. And really just want to commend him as a student representative for the school committee. He has really expanded what you bring to the table for students and how you highlighted student life this year, so that the public and everyone watching really has a better insight to all the good things that kids are doing at Greenfield High School. So thank you.
Thank you very much on behalf of the committee as well. Have a good night. Okay, we'll move on to reports of the administration and the business manager.
Good evening. In your packets were the financial reports for May and the cover memo summarizing where we stand with things. We are truly in earnest beginning the year and, I should say, continuing the year-end closing process. We've been repeatedly reviewing purchase orders with administrators with budget authority, et cetera, looking at encumbrances, both for salaries and other related expenses. You have the summary as to where we stand as far as a projection to year end. I just want to say also included in the report, in the packet, and in your packets, that your thing was we've heard, there are some comments made as to balances that were left in ESR three. I ran reports to show that it is fully expended. And so that report is included in your packet. And just, I mean, I heard, like, the mayor mentioned last night, like, a hundred ninety-six thousand dollar balance. Those are encumbrances. Those are purchase orders for expenses that the ESR three is allowed to run till December of twenty-five. So those are POs for actual expenses that will be incurring between now and December thirty-twenty-five. Just to make sure I wasn't losing my mind, I actually talked via text with Mr. Number Cow, and he actually agreed that the ESR three is fully expended and encumbered. So, you know, to hear, I just want to clear that up, that I heard, like, a balance of, like, a hundred ninety-some odd thousand to a million remaining in ESR three. The reports are in the packet for you, and also, again, I double-checked with Mr. Number Cow that indeed it is fully expended and committed. With that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Can you show us what the, you know, it looks like that you're referring to?
That's my question.
Okay.
The ethers three report?
The ether, yeah.
It's a Munis report. It says, right. It shows a hundred ninety-three thousand, seven ninety-seven and fifty cents encumbered, and the far right shows zero balance available.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay. Excellent. Thank you very much. Move on to the Assistant Superintendent.
Good evening. My report tonight, in terms of grant updates, I just want to give another shout-out to the folks who supported the April Acceleration Academy, as well as the February Acceleration Academy. We had over twenty students in both academies. We had much more interest from teachers and IAs in the April Academy, which is a good sign. And I think the work moving forward is about how to find that balance between the students and the staff, now that there is some interest. So I look forward to seeing that program grow. It was supported through a DESI grant, and I'm hopeful that that grant continues to be offered because we've had a lot of really positive feedback, both from staff and students and families who participated. We also received notice in the past few weeks that the Summer Food Service Program Expansion Grant was awarded. They received a grant for seventeen thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars to support the ongoing efforts to expand access to meals during the summer months. If you think back to August or September, I think the superintendent announced last summer our food service department served over sixty thousand meals. And this is money that will go towards continuing that and growing that opportunity for the community. We're also starting to wrap up another grant, the Mass Cultural Council Creative Project for Schools. Local artist Sarah Hearn Belmer has been working in all three of our elementary schools. I did make an announcement about this before, but just wanted to bring it back to the forefront as we start to close this out. In all three elementaries, there's still some work to be done. But I know Sarah has talked about finding space at the library over the summer and things like that. So the students' artwork can be on display for the community. This is also a grant, my number two, but I felt compelled to separate it from the other grant update. The Innovation Career Pathways is something that I've probably reported to you five or six times at this point. We found out last week that Greenfield did receive a designation from Secretary Tutwiler, the Secretary of Education for the Commonwealth. And, you know, now the work can really begin in earnest. We anticipate additional grant opportunities through this and start rolling it out as soon as next fall. It is a grant that allows us, or a program that will build one year onto the next. So next year, we'll start with likely a handful of ninth-grade students, and then that will be the first cohort, and anticipate growing that opportunity and looking at other Innovation Career Pathway opportunities down the road. But credit to the Innovation Career Pathway team. We've worked really hard over the course of the year and have been waiting patiently on this designation. And it was announced at a STEM event late, middle of last week. Terms of professional learning, we're planning our final district-wide professional learning day, which is next Friday. It's a half-day for students, and teachers will engage in professional learning for the second half of the day. And our focus has been on the continued implementation of our high-quality instructional materials. And we're going to continue that work. We actually had a meeting this morning, looking ahead to next year, closing out this year. And I can anticipate we'll continue to deepen our work on lesson internalization, prioritization, and supporting students to take ownership of their learning and be engaged in new ways and opportunities. Also wanted to shout out the admin team. We had five administrators, principals, and department heads participate in mock interviews for prospective teachers at the University of Massachusetts on a Tuesday, on a Wednesday evening before the April break. It was a good opportunity, both for our staff, but also for prospective students. Those students went through a round of interviews with our administrators, and it allowed us to pitch the district as well. So we've talked a little bit about our recruitment efforts. Our partnership with UMass is something that we value. And another thing that we continue to want to grow and foster moving forward, the Extended Year, Extended School Year program, our summer program, planning is underway. Again, we had a lot of interest from staff, and we're working out some details. But if people had questions, they can certainly reach out to my office or Pupil Services. Sarah Crawford, one of our assistant special, or pupil service directors, is the coordinator for the program. So we're working closely on offerings for the summer. And then finally, I was fortunate enough to attend a short portion of the Training Active Bystander Training happening at Greenfield High School today. This is for, from Quabin Mediations Training Active Bystander Program. Had approximately thirty students attend the training over the last two days. And the idea is that this program will empower these students to bring this curriculum to students across the district, starting next fall, be it middle school, elementary school, supporting our students in understanding what active bystandership is and how they can be active bystanders. And I want to thank the Franklin County Sheriff's Department. Due to a grant that they're supporting, we were able to receive this training at no cost for our students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent?
Thank you. I'm going to start with the Summit of Assessment Evidence for the Superintendent Eddie Bell. You have electronic copies of this, but due to its volume, I did not print it out for each of you. And then I have a short report after the presentation. So if you recall, in August, the school committee and I agreed on four goals, one for each of the standards, and then would be evaluated in agreement regarding the Focus Indicators for Administrators for two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five. You have been shared a Google Drive where all of this information lies, as well as additional evidence that's not presented in the PowerPoint this evening, that you can peruse at your leisure. So just a reminder that the core values and beliefs of the Greenfield Public Schools are that students are first, that we share a vision with stakeholders, that we are supportive and engaging, and we are collaborative with our families. These were the agreed-upon goals. I'm not going to read them verbatim, but they are in your packet. And these are the focus indicators that align with those goals. When you are looking at the evidence, you could be looking at the indicators and looking in each individual folder that aligns with these indicators. The first standard was under instructional leadership. That goal was to provide administrators with professional development for the review of student data and evidence-based instructional practices that directly impact student growth and learning. Some of the things that we've accomplished this year is our district instructional leadership team and engaging in professional development there. We've put in place data protocols and analysis that start with the admin lead team, educator evaluation and professional development for our administrators on how to provide quality feedback, early literacy professional development on diagnostic assessments. We've been working all year with the Teaching Lab with regards to our instructional strategy focus. We've been working on Literacy PD with a focus on new diagnostic assessments with the Core and PASS implementation. We've completed an administrative book study. And we are also in professional development with the Collaborative for Educational Services on climate and building a culture of belonging. Some of the things that we've been doing with the Teaching Lab is really trying to deepen the expertise of our school leaders and equipping them to build data-driven systems in their buildings so that all students are receiving what they need. Some sample ELL fifth-grade population map score comparisons for you. Our three subgroup focus areas this year with regards to our statewide system of support turnaround status have been our L population, our students with special needs, and our Hispanic and Latino students. And you can see the fifth-grade sample that I pulled shows an increase in MAP RIT scores for our fifth-grade L population from fall to winter. Our spring MAP testing is not complete as of today. It should be done in the next few weeks, but I didn't have that data available for tonight. In addition, another one of our subgroup populations is the Special Education population. And you will see from fall to winter, we have had growth in our high-to-high average and as well as reducing the number in our low-low-to-average. So we are making steps. We are certainly not anywhere where we need to be, but we are seeing some definite impacts on the work that we've been doing with the instructional strategies. One of the things that we've really tried to focus on this year is giving feedback after professional development. All of our teachers receive feedback surveys when they have completed, but also our admin team does as well, to make sure that we are actually implementing the support that our administrators need. And this was from a February E-team, where administrators really improve their ability to identify trends in teacher mindsets in their schools and their schools' ability to serve student subgroups. So just wanted to share some data there, that the professional development that we received really helped administrators grow in that area. In addition, our middle school access scores were in. And I picked middle school because those are students who have had at least three years of high-quality instructional materials in ELA and math. And you can see that the performance over time, the progress that they have made this year, is showing great growth. So I think the implementation of those high-quality instructional materials is really having an impact. The Teaching Lab year-long work, these were some of the goals that we were working towards as a district. I won't read them verbatim for you, but these goals really serve towards building structures and systems that have helped us to engage in data, a data culture of literacy. So it's been nice working with them, and they've been really supportive for our admin team and our teachers. We had conducted a book study, Leading with Dignity, and we also had professional development on the science of reading. And we have engaged with the collaborative. Each month, the admin team has a culture and climate-building professional development, and this was a highlight of the breakdown. Our May session is next week, and we will have one final one in June before we close out with them and decide on next steps. They are also working with our Restorative Practice Subcommittee, who is working to implement restorative practices in the district. And then we have been focusing on that building a culture of belonging, not only with our administrators, but leading them in a place where they can build a culture of belonging for their staff, and staff can then build that culture of belonging for their classrooms and with students in their classroom. Under this standard as well, we've conducted six district walkthroughs. We, as Assistant Superintendent and Superintendents, spend time with the principals and do site visits. We not only do the sixth official, but we spend time in their building every week. You will see the growth from September to March. We just finished up our May walkthroughs as well. But there has definitely been some increases in the Look Fours, as we call them, in the Learning Walk tool. And we are excited to see all of the growth across the district. These are just district-wide trends. Each principal receives their own building-based data. Some classroom visit shots, my favorite part of getting into those classrooms. And then these are just some specific Look Fours that came out of our last Learning Walk, where we were deepening what we were looking for in each classroom. And we solidified the Learning Walk tool to be a little more succinct, so that it wasn't as lengthy and that we were focused on two indicators, instead of, I think, the original walkthrough had twelve. And you will see that we have some positive growth. Teachers are beginning to plan for higher-order thinking and discourse and really designing tasks that support deeper understanding. The second indicator was management and operations. And the goal there was to ensure district resources are delineated equitably to address improvement in student attendance and access for all students to high-quality instructional materials. and access for all students to high-quality instructional materials, appropriate curriculum to improve the district's overall student experience. One of the things that we've really tried to do is hone in on our chronic absenteeism rate this year. You will note in most of my parent updates, I add a blurb about attendance and encouraging folks to think about how attendance matters for our students. We also had implemented a second chance bus. If students miss the first round of the bus, they have a phone they can call or a sign-up sheet in our principals', and we can go get them. The building level, each week they have attendance meetings and they look at those students who are chronically absent and try to work with families on getting a pathway back to getting to school and getting to school on time. We've been working on unity messaging, making our schools a place where students want to come and learn, and we've been doing a lot more parent and family outreach at the building base level as well. You'll see, this is just documentation of when those attendance meetings happen. We have them at different times so that if necessary, Stephen or myself can attend, a nurse leader attends. We also had our Director of Behavioral Services attending too. And we did see some positive improvement, and although it's incremental, I thought it was good to highlight the December data that I had shown you from the formative assessment is in blue, and the data I pulled as of April is in yellow, and you can see we are inching towards progress. We still do have a long way to go and want to make sure that we continue this focus in the future. Additionally, part of this standard is around budget and finance and highlighting all of the ways that we engaged with the public. PTO, school committee, attended city council. They also attend PTO meetings and school councils at the building level to get feedback. We highlighted it in the parent update so that we could have that engagement with stakeholders about what they valued in a school budget. We have been very strategic in implementing high-quality instructional materials across the board in numerous content areas. This is just a highlight of some of the products that we continue to invest in so that our students have what they deserve. We continue to look for grant opportunities always to expand the student experience and assist with offsetting budget costs, and this was just the grant sheet from FY25. We are very excited as Assistant Superintendent Sullivan recognized tonight that the press release that just came out on May 7th is we are one of those twenty new high schools that will have the expanded innovation career pathway. So we're very proud of that and look forward to Greenfield High School having that manufacturing career pathway. We are always trying to be innovative in how we attract people for our district, and we advertise on our website, we advertise on School Spring, we have put ads in the recorder, School Spring links to Indeed. We have, you know, partnered and collaborated with local communities, colleges. We've also done mass hire collaborations, always trying to figure out better ways in order to get people to apply for our openings. We have really tried to focus in on the Leading with Dignity and the book study and how that relates to really making principals and department heads have that driving voice in the climate and culture that they're building, and then working in collaboration with the boots-on-the-ground in their ILTs to transfer that mantra down to the building base level. This part is also about the environment and addressing safety. When we were walking into the high school last night, Glenn had commented on how nice the new emblem worked, it looked, and we want to thank the Moose again for donating the funds to have that fixed, but certainly does make a nicer entrance for Greenfield High School than previously. We also are trying to highlight social and emotional needs in our students, and these are just some highlights from my parent update. Every month, we have a different castle competency that we focus on in each building, and our social and emotional lessons and advisory highlight those same skills. And we also try to share tips with families on what they can do at home to support the work that we are doing socially and emotionally in our buildings. The Be Amazing Awards constantly are a highlight in the parent update about the unity messaging that we're trying to create as a district and celebrate students in their highlights for being supportive and welcoming. Each week, we highlight students or staff who have been caught being amazing. We give out T-shirts, pencils, stickers. We have little bees from Greenfield Savings Bank that kids love and really just try to recognize them for all the good that they're doing in each day. The third standard is, standard was around family and community engagement. The goal was to provide access in multiple formats to families and community members with engagement opportunities at each school. Some of the highlights we've taken up are my weekly parent updates in Using Smore, the radio spots on WHAI in Bear Country, the numerous community and family events and site visits, and our transportation and translation services. I try to highlight for folks so they know where to find me in my Where's the Superintendent Going to Be Next in the Parent Update? I will be at the band concert tomorrow night at Greenfield High School. If you don't read the parent update before seven o'clock tomorrow, so if you want to come, please join me there. I try to engage in the community and events that happen district-wide, really showing the importance of being involved, being available. We had a wonderful yellow conference at the high school recently. It was great to listen to student voices. We had the district-wide band concert earlier this year. And really plan on, you know, going to more places as the year unfolds. We always love our food truck supper nights in the summer, so those are always something to look forward to. We had the Taste of World Cultures recently at the high school, and we celebrate bingo for books. We had a math night as well at the elementaries. It was a highlight to join Nate Woodard. He received the MLK Junior Bright Light Award at GCC. And then I always try to attend all school meetings because they're always such fun because they're led by our students and they always do such a great job. Then we had the polar plunge. That was something. And quite cold. I was in the chicken coop, not jumping in, and the first middle school band concert that actually has happened in a while, and shout out to Hannah Cherry for making that happen because it was amazing. We are back on the radio, which is part of the marketing plug. Folks had answered a family survey at the end of the former superintendent's tenure here, and one of the things that they were looking for for us is to get back out there on the radio, to get back out on social media, and to really be more apparent in that technological world. So we have partnered again with WHAI in Bear Country, and every Thursday we tape a message about Greenfield Public Schools. It plays on Fridays and Tuesdays. We also have Language Bridge Interpretation now, which is really beneficial for all of us. Years ago, we used to have to wait for translation services, and now all we have to do, no matter who you are in district, is dial a phone number and you're connected with someone who can translate on the spot. So communication with our families is not stalled, so it's a really great service. And I want to shout out to our Director of Pupil Services, David Messing, for making that happen. This was just some of the results from the parent survey that really showed they wanted some alternative ways that we were connecting, and one of those has been our social media launch. If you don't follow us, please do. Greenfield Public Schools, we're on Instagram and Facebook, and a lot of great things are posted on there. And we try to highlight all of the wonderful things that our kids are doing each and every week. We've adopted SMORE across the district because SMORE can be translated on the spot. I think it's a hundred and thirty languages, so all the person has to do is click the translation, so there's no need to even call Language Bridge. You can just read it in the language that you want to. All of our principals use this for their newsletters as well, which make it very convenient for all of our families. The last standard was professional culture. The goal was to foster and support the use of data and data analysis to increase student outcomes with a focus on our three subgroups, and the use and implementation of best practices and highly effective teaching strategies to maintain high expectations district-wide to enchi- to achieve improved results. So that goes back to a lot of the site visits, the PD, the data analysis, but it also goes through with relationships with teachers and union representatives, classroom walkthroughs, and pathways that we're trying to create to make our schools more exciting and engaging for our students. One of the things that we're doing at the high school was making sure that our guidance counselors have the support they need. One of our focus areas is on ninth grade failure rate because that is something we're very concerned about. So Assistant Superintendent Sullivan hooked our guidance counselors up at the high school with Helen O'Donnell, who's been doing some work with them and really creating some opportunities. They now have their own link on our website, which has made it easily accessible for folks to access them. And then they've actually engaged with Helen in really talking about strategies they can use in order to provide some supports according to the Mas Model or Framework for Comprehensive School Counseling Programs for our students. This was just a sample of the agenda of one of the meetings that they had, but really supporting, supporting our students on, am I on track to graduate? You know, what does this mean to set and achieve in a goal? Am I employment-ready? And really having those conversations earlier. The other thing that we've implemented this year is really a deep dive into the data and really trying to support our teachers in understanding the students in front of them and what those students' progress monitoring means and what they have to do when they actually find that the data is not meeting the goals. So one, this is just a spreadsheet that we've been using, and it really makes them be reflective about, how are my students performing from progress monitoring, pinpoint to the next one? And then of those students that are not meeting growth, who are they? Do they fall in those subgroups? And what do we need to do to address the, still the skill gaps that are there? We have been working year-long on goals, and you'll see, I know this is very tiny, but you do have it in your packet, the district-level goals, the school-level goals, and the classroom-level goals, and we've really tried to streamline them so that all of us doing this work have some ownership in it and that it is not just teacher-heavy, but that it is all of our responsibility to make the student experience better. We are in our year three of work with Teaching Lab, and you'll see that part of that is progressing into years four and five so that we can really solidify the work that we have begun in the past three years. And then just some more data from E-team on ability to identify those trends and serve our student subgroups. And then our restorative practice work that we've been doing with the collaborative, really discussing common language, how to develop and share common language around restorative practices, how to really get family and student feedback, and how to support a positive school climate and culture. There is much more evidence, but I thought that was plenty, at least for this evening, but you have access to all of the Google Drive folders. And then I just have a quick update. The normal enrollment numbers, there were a couple of moves really significant at the high school that you'll notice, five. We had two students that moved to Orange, one student who was placed out of district, one who aged out, and one who moved to Connecticut, so I'd just like to highlight some of the shifts. And then I was asked to give a business manager update because we had, I had been directed by you to go out to bid for the business manager on the March meeting, and I had sent the bid proposal to the city because there was conflict of interest, obviously, for Andy to do the procurement for us. I posted it again on School Spring. It was refreshed, and it was also refreshed with MasBo. As of May 1st, I didn't have an update on the bid, but we did receive two qualified candidates on School Spring, so I have contacted them to engage in interviews. On May 9th, I met with the school committee chair just to seek out an alternate vendor to complete the bid process. I had indicated to the city finance director that we were going to use a different vendor. The Collaborative for the Educational Services is going to conduct the procurement process for us. I've been in conversations with them this week, and we will be moving forward the bid, with the bid. And then one of the qualified candidates who had applied actually withdrew their application on May 13th, but we do have one interview set up on Monday, the 19th, at Central Office. And member, Secretary Denise, will sit on that as she had in the previous round, along with the other members of the interview committee. That's it.
Thank you. Let's divide up our questions, I guess, first for just kind of regular, the regular report, and then we'll open questions if people have follow-up around the superintendent's presentation. So any questions on the regular report from the Assistant Superintendent and the Superintendent? Member Goodwin?
It's a surprise. I only have one really simple question. So the, May 12th, the collaborative, so I didn't know the collaborative. So is the collaborative actually advertising for a business manager? What is?
They'll do the bid process for us.
Wow.
Sorry. They're going to do the bid process for us, so I wish I could remember her name. I'm sorry, I can't remember her name. Lincoln, thank you. Ms. Lincoln is handling it, and we were just communicating on the final pieces this afternoon, and it will be posted Monday.
So she'll post the whole position across the state?
Well, so there's two tracks that we're pursuing simultaneously. One is to seek an employee, and that's the interview that the superintendent mentioned. And the other is the procurement to seek a vendor who would provide the services for us. And so, yes, that would be advertised statewide on ConBis, and there's a whole procurement process that they'll follow, yeah. Any other, I'm looking at the Zoom now, if anyone on Zoom. Okay, not seeing any. Okay, now let's, oh, sorry. I'm either looking at one or the other.
This is less of a question and more of a comment about the community engagement. So last week, the middle school had their bike rodeo, and it was such a phenomenal event, very well-attended. The police department was there supporting the kids, and they had mobile bike repair there so all the kids could get their brakes serviced, because you know how bikes not being ridden all winter will deteriorate. And I just wanted to compliment the administration, all the way down to the middle school staff volunteers for doing such a wonderful thing for the kids, and I hope that that is a program that is continued.
Thank you. Any other questions on the general school business? All right. Any questions or comments for the superintendent on her, her self-evaluation? I certainly appreciate the time and effort you put in and your presentation. I'm looking forward to digging in to the materials. I guess, one just observation that I have is that your presentation showed a breadth of so many things, and I guess I have kind of a close-up view in particular to your engagement with city counselors and the school committee, and that's been extremely time-intensive. And so I've been kind of like had a magnifying glass on that part of your work, and it's very good to see all the other things that are happening as well, and I don't know how you do it, but I appreciate it. And I hope we can free up more of your time to put attention on the educational aspects in the future, at least getting through this budget period, so. So some logistics about the superintendent evaluation. So tonight or tomorrow, you'll receive from me a link to an online evaluation form. You will, in the past, we have evaluated the superintendent on every single characteristic in that form, in that rubric that's been developed. But actually, we're only evaluating the superintendent on these particular items that she reported on tonight. That's part of the agreement. We don't evaluate on absolutely everything. There's certain, you know, areas that we're, we're evaluating her on, so those will be the focus of the form. So you'll notice who people have done it in the past, that it may be shorter, and hopefully will give you a time, chance to go more in-depth on the items that we actually. will give you a time, chance to go more in-depth on the items that we actually contracted with the superintendent to evaluate her on. So, the deadline for that is going to have to be pretty firm because the collaborative will need about two weeks to compile the data and we'll need kind of a week to get it together before next month's meeting. So, you have one week from whenever it is issued to complete that. And then we will have our evaluation of the superintendent at the next meeting. Secretary Denis?
Just to confirm, so this time we're doing it online and the collaborative is collating the results?
Yeah, I think they did it last year, too. In the past, school committee members have been responsible for collecting these hard copy forms and like tabulating everything and I thought if we're taking this seriously, it's, the collaborative has a very reasonable rates to have a professional evaluator gather our data and summarize things for us and also kind of leaves, gives it maybe more credibility because it's not someone with an agenda who's compiling the data, I guess, so.
I greatly thank you for that.
Yeah, sure. Any other questions about the process? Okay, thank you very much. Next on our agenda. We next have the consent agenda, which includes approving the minutes of April 9th, 2025, approving the administrative receptionist job description, approving high school library book weeding lists, not reading lists, weeding, meaning getting rid of books, approve summer eats pay rates, approve the donation of three play structures for the Discovery School at Four Corners Play Area, and approve the city capital planning committee vote that approved the purchase of the combo oven with a not-to-exceed-dollar amount of $120,000 funds for the purchase to come from the food service revolving account. Are there any items on the consent agenda that any member would like to separate out? Not seeing any, so I would hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
A motion from Secretary Denis, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Member Goodwin. Any discussion? Okay, yes, Vice Chair Sexton.
I was just wondering, where do the books go after we get rid of them? Do we donate them to places?
So, city departments have the opportunity for two weeks to come and take whatever they want and then we usually coordinate with Roundabout. They have been very receptive to taking most of what we're discarding, so that's usually our next step. But if you have other avenues, we're always happy to make sure they get donated to where it might be useful.
Not that I can think of, but I'll put my thinking cap on it.
Okay, any other discussion? Member Goodwin?
Is the item F, the oven for the middle school? Okay.
Yes. Vice Chair Sexton?
Sorry, I had one other thing about the proposed pay rates for staff. Do we think that that's going to be enough to entice people to do the work? We're just pretty confident. I just want to make sure. They're finicky tonight.
They are. They are increased from last summer, so Greta wanted to make sure they were posted so she can post the positions and she usually has a lot of interest, so hopefully that will suffice.
Cool, thanks.
Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Okay, Secretary Denis, will you call the roll?
Chair Johnson-Massan?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Vice Chair Sexton?
Yes.
Member Goodwin?
Yes.
Member Childs?
Yes.
Mayor Disorga?
Mayor Disorga left at 7:18.
Okay, thank you. Member Martini?
Yes.
Okay, it passes with one abstention, the mayor not being here.
Okay, thank you. Next, we're on school committee reports. I'll just say I want to thank you all so much for our special meeting last night to discuss the budget moment that we're in and I appreciated the discussion and working to kind of broadcast the message that we resolved on together last night. And so, we encourage people to spread the word that we're kind of trying to do our part here with our budget and we're asking the city council and the mayor to meet us The ad hoc redistricting subcommittee, any report?
Yes.
Secretary Denis?
We met on May 12th at Central Office. We reviewed the configurations we worked on two years ago and received a report on three meetings held by the superintendent to explore new possibilities. Two possibilities were outlined based on the outcome of those meetings. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, June 3rd, at the Greenfield Library at 6:00 PM in the conference room.
Thank you.
Yes.
Questions or comments for Secretary Denis about the ad hoc redistricting? Okay, thank you very much. And then, please, Secretary Denis, continue with your Massachusetts Association of School Committees, MASC Division 5 report.
Okay. On May 6th, Ann, Stacy, and I traveled to the UMass Club and State House in Boston to attend the MASCE, that's Massachusetts Association of School Committees, Day on the Hill event. We joined forces with Amherst, Sunderland, and Hadley School Committee members to discuss increasing Chapter 70 funding, special education transportation costs, rural school aid, and charter school sending tuition. We met with Senators Eldridge, Olvera, DiDomenico, Lewis, and Comaford, and we met with Representatives Gomez and Cabral. The next possible steps are a planned event at the Delaney House in October hosted by our Division 5 Chair to invite legislators to have a more in-depth conversation about these issues, as well as photo ops and dinner with other school committees in our Pioneer Valley area. We'd like to thank Jesus Leva for coming with us to support and arrange many of the meetings we attended. His help was invaluable and thank you to Member Childs for driving us all the way to Boston and back.
Any questions? I want to thank you all so much for making it happen. It's exciting to see now, I think, two years in a row, the school committee really having three years in a row. It's really kind of growing and building and we're becoming more mature as advocates and lobbyists and I really appreciate the work that you're doing on that, your leadership in particular, Secretary Denis. Let's see, next we have old business. Does anyone have any old business that needs to be addressed before our June meeting? Okay, move on to new business. I asked that we have this on our agenda. Greenfield Pride is coming up and I just wanted to have a conversation amongst us about how and how or whether we'd like to attend. There are many different options for participating. I personally think it would be a great thing to do. So, anybody got any ideas, thoughts about it?
I'm also in favor of that, of showing up and participating because we won't be the, like, city counselors go, some of our other elected representatives also attend and participate in the march, but more importantly, some of our staff and many of our students are also there and I think it would, you know, be a really nice gesture if we could be there in support and collaboration with each other, letting them know they're not alone and either are we.
Nice.
June 7th, 7th, it's Saturday.
And I don't remember exactly what time, they gather at the middle school, right, and then march into town?
The parade starts at 11, but I don't know what the meetup time is.
Earlier.
Hopefully.
Probably 10:30 would be fine.
Bring sunscreen.
Yeah.
The one thing that I sort of have questions about is, I mean, we can go and march and just be in our plain clothes, but is there some way that we wanted to be identifiable as school committee members or generic, you know, school-related people? If there's a T-shirt or something that's already available to us for that? I was just wondering if you had more thoughts on that?
I would love us to have school committee pride T-shirts. I think we could do it. What do you think?
I love it. I want to wear school committee pride T-shirts and I have rainbow wings and I will hand out all of the rainbow craziness that I own to all of you.
The other question is, there is a part of the parade where elected officials march, so we could march there together or there may be other places we could plug in. I'm kind of agnostic, I guess, at this point. I guess I have a slight preference for marching with the elected officials, but I could go anywhere.
Does the school have an official marching section? Are teachers and students planning something official?
Students and staff do march. I don't know how they actually align them in the marching order, but I know our band usually also marches, so I can find out more information for you if you want to know where they will be. Or I don't know who actually organizes it and might have parade order, marching order.
You mean, oh yeah, the pride organizing committee?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, well, I don't think we need an official vote or anything, it just sounds like there's no objection and we'll try and get some T-shirts made and maybe we can, we'll be gathering some information, but maybe we can plan to meet there at like 10:15 and sort out where we're going to march and all that. Okay, great. All right, that's the last item on the agenda, other than adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A motion from Secretary Denis, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Member Childs, any discussion? Secretary Denis, will you call the vote?
Yeah, hold on one second. Second, okay. Chair Johnson-Massan?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Vice Chair Sexton?
Yes.
Member Goodwin?
Yes.
Member Childs?
Yes.
Member Martini?
Yes.
We are adjourned.